Good morning. I'd like to call to order the February 10, 2022, meeting of the RTC Board of Commissioners. I'd like to first note that Mayor Protam Stavros Anthony and Councilman George Galt are joining us via call-in. With that, I'll turn it over to you, MJ.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Your first item today is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
Thank you. This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time is limited to comments on items included on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and state your name for the records. Do we have any public comment from the audience? Additionally, with the rise of COVID-19 cases in Clark County, RTC has been accepting public comment via email to be read aloud by staff into the record. Are there any public comments to be read by staff?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Mayor Dubois, for the record, there are no comments for this period.
Thank you. If there are no other public comments, we'll move to the next item.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to approve your agenda. It's in order and ready for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board? If not, we'll go ahead and call for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion on the floor, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Nay. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to receive your CEO report. And first, we'd like to take a moment to recognize our chairwoman, Mayor March, for her contributions to the region and to the RTC as chair of the Southern Nevada Strong Steering Committee for the past two years. During last month's SNS Steering Committee, staff committee members acknowledged her vision and leadership in creating a regional plan for our community that continues to help drive regional collaboration, planning, and economic development throughout our community. During her time as chairwoman of SNS, she encouraged the region to apply for the Sustainable Communities Grant that ultimately led to the first federally recognized regional plan in Southern Nevada. She was also present during every step of the planning process as a member of the consortia committee and often the public face of Southern Nevada Strong. Chairwoman March has served as chair or vice chair of the SNS Committee since its inception, representing the RTC board, where she had the foresight and enthusiasm to think about planning in new ways, regionally, across sectors, and for all of our diverse residents. Chairwoman, you are a tireless advocate for Southern Nevada, always reminding us that our residents lead regional lives. We appreciate your recent tenure as chair and know that you will remain a valuable member of the SNS Committee. So, on behalf of the RTC and SNS, we want to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, Madam Chairman, I just wanted to, again, thank you. One of the study sites for Southern Nevada Strong was downtown North Las Vegas. And I just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate, in North Las Vegas, the leadership and the advice actually brought forth from Southern Nevada Strong as we rebuild a downtown Waltham community in North Las Vegas. We're right on the cusp of some really exciting things happening. We're already partway there, but hey, the Rancho High School motto for our football team years ago, I think the last time they won a state title, was "The best is yet to come." And definitely "The best is yet to come." But thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I just want to recognize you for your service on the SNS Committee. But also, it's not just about your service. You had your Henderson leaders step up to the plate. Lisa Carrato and others put a lot of time into making that effective. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And you know, I have to say that there were a number of project areas that were identified across the valley, like North Las Vegas, Maryland Parkway for the county, the medical district for the city of Las Vegas. So, it's wonderful to see the transitions that have occurred because of the investment and then the fact that with this regional plan, we were allowed to apply for federal dollars, which is wonderful, that we were able to access so many different funds from different categories across agencies, whether it was brownfields or Economic Development Resources or many other areas, even transportation resources, to be able to do some of the amazing work. And actually, the work of Southern Nevada Strong actually began in 2012. And so, while I chaired it with the RTC, we've been involved with it from an early inception. So, thank you very much for the kind words. I really appreciate it.
You inspire all of us, Mayor.
Thank you.
Next, we have three outstanding mechanics that we would like to recognize from our contractor, MV Transportation. I'm going to hand it over to Deputy CEO Francis Julian to introduce our mechanics, Michael Smith, Michael McKenzie, and Von McCombe.
Thank you, MJ. This month, we're celebrating not one, not two, but three mechanics from MV. Michael Smith, Michael McKenzie, and Von McCombe. Those three mechanics together have a combined experience of 65 years. They've worked more than 20 years each, obviously, and went through the diesel phases of the bus we had to the transition to CNG, and now we're even working to the electrification of our fleet. So, let's have our own Rudy Long go and celebrate them. Let's watch.
Thanks, Francis. Let's go surprise these guys. Hey, guys. On behalf of RTC, I'd like to thank you guys for your years of service.
Woo!
It's been an experience of 22 years and the good people I've worked with at RTC. It's been an adventure, and I'll always have memories about the good times.
It's been an experience also to be here. You know, been 20 years here. It's a great experience. I hate to go, but it's time to go for me. Everybody here are coworkers. It's pretty good to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you for 22 years of service. I've been working on buses since 1973, and I've had a great experience.
On behalf of MV, we would like to recognize all of your years of service, and we are presenting you with these awards here. For you, Mr. McCombe, 20 years of service. Mr. McKenzie, thank you. Mr. Smith retired last, this past December. We recognized him earlier, or late last year. But again, thank you. This place is not going to be the same without you, I can guarantee you. And words cannot express how grateful and how much gratitude I have towards you. So, thank you guys for your service.
Francis, are any of the mechanics here today?
Yes, Von McCombe is here.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Moving along, we'd like to highlight our internal superstars of the quarter from the fourth quarter 2021. The first winner has demonstrated a strong commitment and expertise during the National Transit Database Audit by proactively taking control of the process and helping to lead the team's efforts. She worked directly with the auditor and responded quickly and thoroughly without garnering any rebuttals from the auditor. And if you've been through an audit process, you know it's not easy. So, without further ado, our first superstar of the quarter winner is Tiffany Young.
Wow.
Tiffany Young. Tiffany's not here, but we are really fortunate to have her as part of our team. She's amazing. Francis is going to do the honors.
Thank you, MJ. Today, we're celebrating for superstar of the quarter Tiffany Young. Tiffany works in the ADA Paratransit and was adamant in us getting zero finding in the NTD report. She really, really worked hard to make sure that all the procedures for the FDA were dotted to the i and crossed to the t. So, I'll jump on a WebEx, and let's go surprise Tiffany. Tiffany, can you stand up?
Me? What is this?
So, Tiffany, you're the superstar of the quarter.
Yay!
Tiffany, for all the great work you did for the NTD audit, and as, we're going to repeat it and say it out loud to everybody that wants to hear it, zero findings. So, you know, congratulations on that. And obviously, that really, really commanded a recommendation. So, congratulations, and keep up the excellent work, and all the team, please, keep up the excellent work, that we hopefully surprise you this morning.
Hello. Thank you, RTC. Thank you, Francis. Thank you, MJ. Thank you to Antoinette Terry Renaud and the entire team here for Paratransit Quality Assurance. I'm very honored to receive this award, and I know zero findings for NTD is very, very important to the agency. So, I'm very honored to receive this, and I am just happy to be here. Thank you, everyone.
She's awesome. She's awesome.
Wonderful.
So, our second superstar of the quarter is from our Facilities Department and is an incredible asset to the RTC. She recently worked with our Enterprise Asset Management, or EAM, team to learn the new system, but also helped train fellow custodians on how to use this system, even showing them some tips and tricks for the mobile app version. Our second superstar of the quarter is, yay, Faye Smith, and Faye is here.
Am I on the record? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. I've always wanted to be an actress. I'm so excited about the EAM. It's like, it's the truth. It makes people accountable, and I appreciate it. So, I know that you guys spent a lot of money on it, and I'm so happy to have it. But I'm just so happy to be here. I just want to thank Warren and Mark for beating me up in a good way, out of all these years, and MJ, and just everybody, you know, just you guys. Just not my first time being here. I'm just happy to get here. This just gives me energy like the first day. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service. Thank you. Thank you.
Francis, there's a video as well, correct?
Yep.
Thank you, MJ.
Nope, yes.
Today, we're celebrating another superstar of the quarter. It's going to be Faye Smith. Faye was adamant in the EM role, in the rollout, to be a trainer. She basically took it upon herself, learned the system, and started training some of her colleagues. She actually even trained me on it in one of the first day. And I'll pass it along to my similarly dressed colleague, Warren.
Thank you, Francis. She was very instrumental on the EAM program. And as Francis indicated, she continued to help others and direct them into learning the system and making it easier. So, we're going to go surprise her and give her this plaque.
Hello, Faye.
Oh, my God.
Hello.
This is God.
Yes, we tricked you. This wasn't a meeting. It's just to, it's just to celebrate you. You're the superstar of the quarter. Yes.
Why?
For all the great work you did with EAM, training all your peers, and the awesome job you're doing on a day-to-day basis. So, congratulations, Faye. I'm so happy for you.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for selecting me. I'm so excited and so happy about the EAM, and just want to thank my supervisors, Mark and Warren, and MJ for sure, for bringing on the EAM and Francis, and just everyone. I'm just so ecstatic about it. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Faye. You know, we love you. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Francis again to inform you about our upcoming transit service change.
Yes, thank you, MJ. Francis Julian, for the record, due to an increase in pandemic-related issues and an industry-wide labor shortage, we've been experiencing severe disruptions in our transit services, and we owe to our riding public to have dependable services. So, we started exploring different options, and as a result, starting on February 22, we'll be reverting back to a Saturday schedule to help drivers that were sick get healthier and help both contractors to recruit more drivers. So, we don't know when the Saturday schedule will happen. Hopefully, it will be sooner than later. But we just wanted to publicly thank all the riders for the patient and really thank the drivers, because the drivers really stepped it up. They worked hard, and as in all messages I do, please respect your driver when you're riding the bus. They're going above and beyond right now in those conditions.
Thank you. Thanks, Francis. I agree. Drivers, it's a tough job, and they do an amazing job. Next, Teresa Geiser, Director of FAST, will provide you the state of the traffic system update.
Good morning, Chairwoman March and board members. Teresa Geiser, Director of FAST, for the record. Today, I'll be presenting the state of the traffic system. This is a recap of what the FAST Division has done in 2021 and some outlooks for what's coming up in 2022. The FAST Division of the RTC manages the freeway and arterial traffic network in Southern Nevada on behalf of the state DOT and the local jurisdictions. FAST utilizes traffic system management and operation, TSMO, strategies to make the most of our existing traffic infrastructure in Southern Nevada. We focus on the key goals of improving safety, preserving capacity, and reducing congestion. Nevada Department of Transportation adopted their statewide TSMO plan in 2020, and the RTC of Southern Nevada is developing a TSMO business case for Southern Nevada to set regional goals FAST operates and maintains the Southern Nevada Traffic System on behalf of the state and the local agencies who are the owners of these devices and these facilities. This is just a brief overview of some of the current numbers of the devices that are out there. Over 1,600 traffic signals between all of the jurisdictions, little over 1,000 traffic cameras, 167 dynamic message signs, or active traffic management, or arrow-over-lane gantries, like the ones you see on I-15 that came on with Project Neon, 74 ramp meters at freeway onramps throughout Southern Nevada, and over 1,200 miles of fiber optic communications cable to connect all of the network together. FAST is always working to minimize delays at traffic signals. FAST identified 350 signalized intersections with reoccurring vehicle detection issues in 2021. This is why RTC is creating a project to work with local agencies to identify and repair or replace damaged signal detection throughout these intersections. Traffic signal preemption provides green lights at signalized intersections to emergency vehicles. In 2021, there was 1 million signal preemptions at Southern Nevada intersections. To provide perspective, at signals near fire stations such as Flamingo and Paradise, that's more than 15 preemptions per day, or 6,000 per year, just at that intersection alone. A typical signalized intersection will normally see about one preemption per day. Sorry. In an effort to reduce delay and minimize signal disruptions, FAST supported the city of Las Vegas's competitive ATC MTD grant proposal for advanced GPS signal preemption. We're still waiting to hear back on whether it'll be awarded. At the Southern Nevada Traffic Management Center, FAST manages traffic incidents, including crashes, police activity, stalled vehicles, roadway debris, on Southern Nevada roadways and freeways. In 2020, FAST managed roughly 7,000 incidents per year, which is about 20 per day. In 2021, FAST managed more than 11,000 incidents, roughly 30 a day, which is nearly a 50% increase. Contributing factors may be Southern Nevada's population growth of more than 40,000 people over the past year, or the additional 13 million visitors that the region has seen just in 2021. FAST is highly focused on public engagement. FAST hosted a Media Day event at the Southern Nevada Traffic Management Center with local media stations to provide details on upcoming projects and continue fostering collaboration with the local media. FAST worked with the local media stations to provide additional traffic camera feeds to them so that they can share those feeds with their viewers. Each day, over 200,000 people travel along I-15 in Southern Nevada and the core of Las Vegas. In 2021, FAST posted over 5,000 unique messages on the dynamic message signs, or the active traffic management gantries, to assist in alerting drivers of traffic conditions. FAST worked with the state DOT and law enforcement on public service messaging, focused on topics such as excessive speeding and drinking and driving in 2021. Additionally, in 2021, FAST shared over 10,000 traffic alerts with the public so they can make informed decisions about their trip planning. As the entertainment capital of the world, Southern Nevada has continued to expand its offerings to include major sporting events. The RTC created the Regional Events Traffic Management Meeting to coordinate with local venues, event promoters, agencies, and law enforcement, and local agencies, to better understand the regional impacts of multiple events at various venues. This committee discussed over 300 events and strategized on them in 2021. FAST actively assisted in the traffic management of 65 of those events in Southern Nevada, including Raiders games, VGK games, EDC concerts, and sporting events. Collaborative and seamless traffic management allows the focus to be on the events and improving the fan experience. FAST is working closely with many partners on technology projects. These are just a few of them. You might have heard repeatedly us talking about the US-95 Integrated Safety Technology Corridor between I-15 and Summerlin Parkway. This is a joint project between RTC, NDOT, Nevada Highway Patrol, UNLV, and the private partner, RECOR. Key components include wrong-way-driving warning systems and strategic traffic management sites for law enforcement. GOMET is another example of partnerships with the city of Las Vegas. This autonomous shuttle partnership has key traffic components, including connected and autonomous vehicle technology and pedestrian safety technology. You've also heard us talk several times this year about the adaptive traffic signal control technology that's being utilized and tried out in several different locations here in Southern Nevada. As a whole, RTC is working on a project to prepare the FHWA model documents for the Concept of Operations and Systems Engineering process to help us make this a consistent, scalable deployment of adaptive signal technology. We also have an adaptive signal system running out on Eastern Avenue between Clark County and Henderson. The city of Henderson has been working on installing adaptive control technology around the new Dollar Loan Center Arena off of Green Valley Parkway, and we are also working with project partners on the Las Vegas Boulevard Corridor to understand if adaptive technology is feasible under those conditions. Lastly, I'd also like to focus on the Advanced Intersection Analytics Project, which is aimed at putting out a request for information to the, to industry to use artificial intelligence and deep learning technology to collect traffic data and provide insights into intersection near misses and red light running occurrences. The last thing I'd like to focus on is at the upcoming Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, or Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill. We are closely looking at these competitive grants, which promote safety technology and would allow us to also modernize our transportation network here in Southern Nevada. Some of the key programs that we are focused on aligning our projects with are the Construction Relief Program, Strengthening Mobility and Revolutionizing Transportation, and Stopping Violence Against Pedestrians. Thank you. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. It seems like we're going definitely in the right direction. With regard to the FAST system and the violence against pedestrians, can you speak to sort of how in intersections that is taken into account? I know, obviously, we try and keep people moving, green lights, et cetera, but how are pedestrians taken into account?
Are you speaking specifically about that last grant one that I was discussing?
No, I know that's coming up. But in terms of current use of the FAST system, how is that taken into account in intersections?
Absolutely. So, we work with all of our partner agencies as we develop the timing plans that are appropriate for the roadway geometry out there at signalized intersections to make sure that pedestrians have the correct amount of time in order to safely cross an intersection. And then, we balance that against the needs of the other movements of the vehicles at the intersection. So, we're always keeping that in mind and updating it, as well as whenever geometry changes out there. That's also being taken into construction, taken into consideration during construction, a lot more of the sidewalks in some of the new residential areas and other arterials are having setback sidewalks instead of right against the travel lanes.
Any other questions?
Yes. Thank you very much for the presentation. In reference to the adaptive traffic system, of course, you know, I did a little bit of research on this, right? And I'm still kind of like hazy, you know, I guess I understand the basic, the basic. Explain to me how, what it should look like once it's implemented, say, along a test road. What is the difference between what we're doing now to what it's going to look like if it actually works as planned?
Absolutely. So, what we try to do is we try to understand what the characteristics are of that roadway and what are the primary movements that we are trying to progress traffic. We also take into consideration if there's a transit line along that facility and what kind of cross traffic there are, there is at the perpendicular intersections. Based on that information, if we are trying to progress traffic along corridors such as Eastern coming out of Anthem heading to the 215, the Southern Beltway, that is a great corridor for us to look at and understand if we can use real-time information, which is what the traffic adaptive signal technology is allowing. It's taking that real-time information and processing it to allow for the traffic to be served on demand as it is at that particular moment in time. As the flow of traffic increases or decreases, the system will continue to do the same while continuing to give priority for that through traffic along Eastern in this particular example. Whereas, a regular or more traditional traffic signal system is doing it based on what we call time-of-day planning, where we're planning for the peaks of traffic based on what we know the volumes out there are. So, it is not as responsive under certain incidents.
We take artificial intelligence predictive models to, that part of also of this new adaptive technology. I ask because like, for instance, there's one well-known ambulance company. These guys have data for every day of the year for, and they are able to actually place ambulances throughout our, throughout our community. And that's why we have responses that are very, very short, because they literally place ambulances and on a predictive model to use according to artificial intelligence and trends. And I mean, they have data going back 20 years. And they're, as you can see here, you don't wait 10 minutes for an ambulance here in Southern Nevada. You wait like three to five minutes once they're alerted. It's amazing. So, will they use these artificial intelligence predictive models to be part of the calculation?
It is incredible what technology is allowing us to do in terms of artificial intelligence and deep learning. We're learning the historical trends of what's occurring out there under regular conditions, daytime conditions, evening conditions, off-peak conditions. And based on that information, that helps inform these systems the best plans to put out there in order to function most efficiently and get the most throughput for the travelers. So, I understand exactly what you're saying about the ambulances and how there's pre-staging available for them, because they do, they can target certain locations and know the frequency in which they may get calls in that area.
I think that is a yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had a couple. So, I know you have done, or you're in the process of doing Eastern as far as this program. But have you looked at Charleston in '95, that area? Are you, are we going to move to the next, another area to try to?
in which they may get calls in that area.
I think that is a yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had a couple. So I know you have done, or you're in the process of doing Eastern as far as this program. But have you looked at Charleston and 95, that area? Are we going to move to the next, another area to try to synchronize these traffic lights?
For adaptive signal technology, what we are doing right now is we're working on the concept of operation to put out a plan for that in the system engineering. That's going to help us be more consistent and more scalable with our approach to which corridors would be best suited for adaptive technology.
So when are you going to make that decision?
So right now.
How can we get involved in that? Because, as you know, Charleston and 95 is a nightmare. And so it seems to me that there's no place in the valley more appropriate than that area. And East Las Vegas is always underserved, so it'd be a perfect combination.
Absolutely. And those are the kinds of things that this study is going to focus on. That study is going to be produced this year, and then we're going to start identifying those characteristics for those corridors using that.
So not till next year, at least? You won't even start looking at it?
So for corridors such as, I believe you're speaking about Charleston and US-95, for those particular corridors, we do know that there have been some ongoing construction efforts in those, in those areas. Whenever a construction project is coming to an end, we'll go out there and we'll work with the local agency and do re-timing. So it may not be getting adaptive this year or under consideration for adaptive, but it will have signal re-timing done on it.
I understand that. But as far as this new program, you're not even going to look at it till next year?
Correct.
Okay. Also, you said you're looking to grant for grants.
Correct.
Are those things you coordinate with the local jurisdictions? I know the county is right now looking at our grants and how we're going to reach out for earmarks and things like that. Do you, do you have your own separate team that does that directly with the Congress? Or do you have, do you work with municipalities, or how's that work?
Yeah, so we, as we work on your behalf, so we work closely with all the jurisdictions. We're more competitive when we approach a grant from a regional perspective. So this is all boots on the ground, so definitely work with all of your, all of your staff.
And you're actively doing that right now?
Correct. That's correct.
All right, thank you.
And Vice Chairman, I didn't want to let you know with regard to pedestrian, understanding pedestrian near misses, we're really excited about the Advanced Intersection Analytics RFI that's going to go out, what's going to come from that. Because not only will it collect data that reports, you know, speeding, red light running, also it will capture near misses. And we'll be able to take that data and share that with all the enforcement agencies. So traffic, Metro's Traffic Division, Andrew Bennett, his new Public Safety Office with the jurisdictions. And I think this, this particular initiative is going to reap a lot of rewards if we can find the right technology.
Very exciting. And I think we're going to see a lot of traffic smoothing and a better flow of traffic in the valley eventually as we start to implement these practices.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa's amazing. Great job, Teresa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, on the next slide, Mr. Reese, the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report from Director Christina Swallow.
Thank you.
Good morning. It's good to be here, as always. And I am going to start with safety, as I always do. You can see the slide doesn't have the data. I'll tell you the data real quick, because we just got it late yesterday after it was too late to submit. Overall, the news is good for the state. It's the first time that I've seen greens in a really long time in terms of comparison over year to year-over-year. I will note that last year was a low bar for us to beat, even though it was a high, right? Like, so it's greens. Unfortunately, there is one county who does not, who did not have a year-over-year better, and that is Clark. In Clark, 33 people lost their lives. I'm sorry. In Clark, 21 people lost their lives on our roads versus 18 last year. That's a 16, almost 17% increase. And I should note that I frequently, when I'm up here, I talk about the ease, and I don't say the ease, but the ease of traffic safety. And some of you may have heard these, some of you may not, that there's engineering. I talk about that a lot, about our role as owners and operators of the system, enforcement, education, emergency services. And I've talked a lot, and I think I said it before, but I want to make sure everybody understands that none of these things, it doesn't matter how we build the system, it doesn't matter how much education, whether or not enforcement was there, none of that absolves the individual, the last E is invite, everyone, everyone. None of that absolves the individual for the decisions that they make every time they get on the roads. And I want to make sure that is perfectly clear. I've seen a lot of Twitter discussion about, well, we need to do this and we need to do that. And yes, we do all need to be looking at those other E's, but we need to remember that each one of us makes a decision when we get out onto the roads. And so I'm going to talk about one of those crashes and why Clark County had January worse than last January. And as you all know, I'm not going to tell you anything new. Saturday, January 29th, nine people were killed in a multi-vehicle crash at Cheyenne and Commerce. Seven of those were in the same family. Four were children. Officials say, I'm also going to note a change I'm making, I'm going to start saying names. I've been scrubbing the names, but I'm going to start saying names. Because when I scrub the name, I think it does absolve somehow in the public's eye. And I don't mean to do that at all. So officials say Gary Dean Robinson of North Las Vegas was the driver of a Challenger. The Challenger was traveling over 100 miles per hour in a 35 mile-per-hour zone when he ran a red light and caused a six-vehicle crash. Fifteen people in all were involved in the crash. Nine lost their lives. Six surviving victims suffered minor or non-life-threatening, two serious injuries. There were serious injuries in those, in the survivors. The community recently held a vigil and a caravan to honor the victims of the mass casualty crash. The caravan drove down Cheyenne, the same street where the tragedy occurred. Those involved hope to bring awareness and urge drivers to slow down. We echo those pleas. The Nevada Office of Traffic Safety says that last year, over 5,100 citations were issued to drivers going over 100 miles per hour. That's up from 4,400 in 2020 and 3,500 in 2019. I should note that those 5,100 citations were not all on the interstate. Many of those were on corridors. We've talked about the crashes on Rainbow, on Cheyenne. I think we had a discussion about one on Coval or on, like, there's nothing about those roads that says it's okay to drive 100 miles an hour. Speed is one of the top causes of fatal crashes on this, across the state, month after month after month. And this is one extremely tragic example of a fact that we know too well in this valley that speed kills. And whether it's seven or one, when you say goodbye in the morning, you expect your family to come home. Wanted to give you an update about what's going on on this current construction project. And I did just want to kind of go back in time a little bit to January 20th, when at about 4:00 PM, during ongoing demolition work of our Eastern Avenue Bridge, a girder unexpectedly collapsed during the removal process. I want, and during that collapse, a contract construction worker was injured and transported to the hospital, and thankfully, he was released shortly thereafter and returned to work the following day. And I'd like to thank, Mayor Goodman actually reached out and wanted to check, and we were texting during the event. I want to make sure everybody understands that this was planned demolition. The girder that collapsed was part of the planned demolition. There is nothing to be concerned about the, about the existing structure. It was fine. This was outside of that. So I just wanted to highlight, make sure everyone was aware of that. OSHA has cleared the work to resume, cleared the work to resume the next morning after the incident, and Eastern opened on time the following week. We appreciate the response from all of our partners in public safety, including Metro Police and Las Vegas Fire for their quick arrival on the scene. As you know, safety is our top priority, and we are working with safety officials to ensure this incident is investigated thoroughly so that it won't ever happen again. By way of other updates, we recently placed the girders on Eastern Avenue Bridge, and the crews will be back to complete the deckport at the end of April. The final phase of the DI Bridge demolition has been completed, and crews will be back in March to set the girders. And all of the bridge work is expected to be completed by the end of May. Throughout next week, several ramps in the downtown area will close overnight. And so I'm going to go through these, and again, you can find out more information. We'll be doing press releases, and if anything changes, we'll do press releases on those changes. But there's a bunch of them, so patience. So Sunday night, February 13th into Monday morning, February 14th. Again, these are all overnight closures from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. The on-ramp from Eastern to northbound 515 will be closed. From midnight until 5:00 AM, that same timeframe, northbound 515 will be reduced to one lane at Eastern. And northbound 515 off-ramp to Las Vegas Boulevard will reopen at 5:00 AM on Monday, the 14th. Tuesday night, from 9:00 till 5:00 AM, the southbound I-515 off-ramp to Casino Center will be closed. From midnight to 5:00 AM, southbound I-515 between Casino Center and Las Vegas Boulevard will be reduced to one lane. From 9:00 PM Wednesday, February 16th to Thursday, 5:00 AM 17th, all Spaghetti Bowl ramps, this one, I think, is the one that really everybody should tune into. So again, Wednesday, 9:00 PM till Thursday, 5:00 AM, all Spaghetti Bowl ramps to southbound 515 will be closed. It's just an overnight closure, but everybody just all. In addition, the Martin Luther King Boulevard on-ramp to south I-15 will be closed, or 515 will be closed. And the southbound I-515 off-ramp to Casino Center will be closed. From midnight Wednesday, February 16th, that same night till 5:00 AM Thursday, February 17th, southbound 515 between I-15 and Las Vegas Boulevard off-ramp will be reduced to one lane. And from midnight Thursday night till 5:00 AM Friday morning, southbound I-515 between I-15 and Las Vegas Boulevard will be reduced to one lane. These closures are needed so that the crews can stripe the highway in preparation to shift the traffic as we continue the viaduct rehabilitation work. So closures, we try to make sure to do them overnight and to minimize the impact and give everybody plenty of notice and prepare for detours. There's still one more buried in here. Additionally, the Las Vegas Boulevard off-ramp from northbound 515 is closing the night of February 7th and will reopen February 14th. So that one will be a longer closure. All of this can be found, we, oh, and we are on target to finish the project by late summer. So we're on target. It's, pain should be over soon. May not be soon enough, but we're working on it. If you want more information, I515project.com for more information and updates on all those closures. I, got to figure out where my remote is. Last month, I told you about our virtual public meeting, talking about 515, so just wanted to give you an update on the Downtown Access Project. We are still in the virtual piece of the virtual public meeting through next Tuesday, February 15th. I think the last time I gave you an update on the project was in November. The meeting materials on the virtual public meeting include information that compares the build alternatives against each other. We're currently in the NEPA phase of this project, which should conclude approximately mid-2023, so probably 15 to 18 months from now. In April of May of this year, the preferred alternative will be identified, followed by publication of a draft environmental impact study, a public hearing, and then ultimately, next year, the final environmental impact statement. After that is when the heavy lifting starts, the design, the right-of-way, the construction, based on being able to identify appropriate funding and include that in the tip and the step. If the project goes smoothly, funding is found, we anticipate project could be complete in 2031. As part of the NEPA process, there are three build alternatives and a no-build alternative being evaluated. The three builds are, one that is below grade, removing the visual obstruction. There are two above-grade on embankment instead of on a bridge, as you know, that is all bridge right now, and there's empty, underutilized space underneath. They would be actually on embankment, similar to what we have with I-15 out here. So there's a north alternative and a south alternative. They're all developed only to a concept level of design, so 10%, and they're preliminary and, of course, subject to change within the limits of the environmental impact statement. While in the NEPA process, we're looking at the impacts the project could have on the area. We're assessing things like noise, historical buildings, waterways, air quality, environmental justice, parks, and recreational facilities, impacts on the community, and more. And since early 2019, we've had more than 75 meetings with the downtown stakeholder groups, as well as individual stakeholders, businesses, churches, residents, and government agencies, amongst others. We've performed several innovative public outreach endeavors that you have been aware of as we've done them, including the street closure campaign, we've done focus group meetings, and we have our social media pages up since the beginning. We recently conducted a survey for residents and businesses in the immediate area to better understand how we can mitigate the impacts, to deliver a project that will be beneficial, not just for those driving through, but especially for those in the surrounding community. A version of this survey is also included in the public meeting. We'll be doing a poll in the future for the entire Las Vegas Valley, again, trying to understand what we need to do, how we can make sure the project is a project that it, the project that it should be, given that it's in the middle of the entire valley. For more information, you can go to NDOTDAP, so NDOT Downtown Access Project, NDOTDAP.com to view the public meeting materials. There are videos of each of the build alternatives. They're pretty, they're pretty sharp to do the video, but then on top of that, there's these comparison pages where you can literally look and go, this is alternative one and this is alternative two, and you can see the direct impacts from them. So pretty sharp visualizations. Encourage you to go check it out if you're interested, and we'd love feedback. And then my last slide for now, I'm back on the agenda here in a little bit, but my last slide for now is great news. Our bridges have been named amongst the nation's best yet again. This time, though, we're tied, it's a three-way tie between Arizona, Texas, and ourselves. Only 1.4% of our bridges, of our more than 2,000 public bridges, have been deemed structurally deficient. That's significant. I think the nation's average is over 7%. I should note that oftentimes, we hear structurally deficient, and we really worry that it's dangerous or unsafe, and that is not necessarily the case. What it does do, though, is it defines whether those bridges need work or potential replacement. And then sometimes, when they become structurally deficient, it requires a weight, a load rating, so you can limit the loads on those bridges. We spend a lot of time talking about this Downtown Access Project, and I do that because that project represents over 10% of our bridge deck area in the state. If that was allowed to become structurally deficient, a couple of things could happen. AR rating, we'd lose our first-place rating, which we don't want to do, right? Nobody wants to fall into second place. But also, what's important is it could result in us having to weight-limit that bridge, and how, and that could significantly impact trade and also could significantly impact emergency response. So our bridges are amongst the best in the nation because we focus on them. We do the work. The work we're doing right now that is so very painful along that viaduct helps make sure that our bridges stay amongst the best. But it also, we should all know and be aware, the older our bridges get, the more frequent that work is going to be needed. Those two bridges, it's two bridges on that viaduct were built in the 60s and in the 80s. The longer that we allow them to age, the more critical the repairs will become, and they'll just become more frequent. So we know that we got to do this bridge, but we also know that we are going to keep our focus on, I think the city of Las Vegas emailed me about a bridge this morning. We got bridges, and we're going to keep them in good condition. Thank you.
Director Swallow, I just have a question. You've been involved historically in the ASCE kind of report card for roadways. How does Nevada fare in that?
You know, I love that you asked that question, and I'm going to tell you, we don't do a comparison on a state-by-state basis, because it's very difficult to get that granular data. So at the national level, we evaluate the national data that gets to, that's reported from all of the different infrastructures, or 17 categories too, but we don't, we don't go on a comparison basis. I would say that we, if I was just, you know, taking that hat off and going back to my NDOT hat, and using other communication materials that we've had, we, our system, our transportation system as a whole frequently rates amongst the best in the nation. We, I think, we benefit from the fact that it's young. Our system is young, and so we don't have quite that same aging that a lot of the others do. But I think we also benefit from its age because we're, when we went in, we went in with the fiber, we went in with the electrical, we went in with the infrastructure needed to be able to do all these really cool things that we're doing with our ATM, ATC, MTD grants. So we benefit from our youth. It is something we're going to have to focus on, though, moving forward, because everything's getting older. But our, our transportation system consistently ranks amongst the best in the nation overall.
Good to hear. Commissioner?
Thank you very much, Director Swallow. I really appreciate your, your report. There's a couple of names, this is not rebuke, but there's a couple of names that definitely should sink in the people's mind. Arlinda Sacarias, that's the mother lost all of her kids. But we also have to remember another name, my friend Tiffany May. I don't know if she's listening. She's actually right now in a rehabilitation clinic. She's going to have to learn how to walk. Now, these are two people who, they're going to wind up having to live the consequences of this incredible accent every day of their lives. There's going to be six times during this month, during this year, where she's going to think, today, my daughter would have turned 14. A couple of years ago, I mean, a couple of years from now, I know I'll be reading, well, if I'm around, if I'm given the honor to read the names of the graduates, I know I'll be thinking, gee, I would have read Brian's name. I think it's easy for us, no, I have to stop, and the first thing I'll say, I want to thank the entire community. That's Southern Nevada's strong thing. I think it's real. And I have to thank the rest of the community, our Clark County, Henderson, Vegas, and all the residents, the way they came around to support the city, but more than anything else, these families who have lost so much, the outpouring, the heart, your arms wrapping around the family, they need it. I talked to the mother last Saturday just before the rally. I think she'd be on grief. But to your point, you know, there I was, speaking at the rally and afterwards, right, trying to wrap our heads around what this means. And while I was trying to give the interview, I was interrupted by some guy. And while I was trying to give the interview, I was interrupted by some guy roaring by. The speed limit's like 45 or 50 there, that dude was going at least 75, 80 miles an hour. And then, last Sunday, at the Second Memorial, at the Martin Luther King statue, I couldn't get an interview in there without other people driving past there. Now, I get really upset. Now, for the rest of you guys, you don't know this, I'm actually still a working high school teacher, I work at Rancho High School. And last Thursday, I was not having a good day. You see, because as I was getting ready for school to start, at 7 o'clock in the morning, I'm in my portable, and I'm right next to 21st Street, I hear the roaring and the spinning of wheels, and I hear screeching outside. What's that? So I go outside, there's a big old plume of smoke. You probably see it before car tire smoke, right? That couldn't be some idiot drag racing up and down the street, could it? But yet, it was. I actually took the, by the way, it was a young man in a Dodge Challenger. Sound familiar? He was out there spinning wheels in a school zone while parents were discord, they were offloading their kids, and kids were trying to walk across the street just to get to school. And this moron, am I allowed to say moron in a public forum? Was spinning his wheels. By the way, I'm not the kind of person, I, I'm kind of old-school, so I literally went out to confront the guy. Probably was not the best thing. I admit, I called him a maggot. I probably, you know, I just, considering what had just happened, maybe my emotions were showing. I took a picture of his car, and by the way, on that one, our friend from Metro caught him. I didn't know, I found out from the students later on that he got caught. I am very willing and very happy to explore measures beyond laws, because I think laws, you know, in effect, they don't protect. We have laws against all sorts of things, but that didn't stop people from doing those things. Laws are mostly an afterthought. They're things that we do, you know, they're very, they're very reactive. But it doesn't help when people have already driven past, driven through a red light and have hurt someone. I have an idea, I have some ideas that I'll probably be approaching other municipalities about in the, for the future, that they have to be checked for legality, they have to be checked for, you know, implementation policy. But more than anything else, you know, I don't think there's a bunch of laws that we can pass, because people don't respect it. If we have one of our commissioners here, my esteemed colleague here, and my former teacher, Councilman Stavros Anthony, when he's telling me that, and he's a cop, when he's telling me that he's driving, you know, at a pretty good clip on the freeway, and he's getting passed up by people, when cops are colloquially telling us that they're being passed, when they're traveling on the freeway, and they're being passed by people who, you know, are obviously scofflaws, right? The issue, it has to be addressed, and it's so much easier to go ahead and pass a law and say, now, we're done with it. No, we're not done with it. It takes a certain measure of personal responsibility. It takes, we all have to commit. We, and we can't, we can't just offload to everybody else. We all have to commit at every level. We have kids, we have to make sure that they commit. We have to be responsible for our kid and tell them, sit them down and tell them, hey, Michael, this is not, this is not the way you're going to drive. And by the way, the same night that we had the horrible accident, we had a pedestrian get killed just on the other side of Cheyenne, Cheyenne and Civic Center, because pedestrians are not following the rules either. I have to thank N.DOT for putting in barriers, like we're seeing on Charleston, right? Charleston between 95 and Nellis was a huge problem area. I do notice that barriers were installed to kind of cut down on the carnage happening with the pedestrians trying to jaywalk there. We put in barriers, some at Lake Mead and Civic Center. People are generally respecting them, but no matter how many, I realize we're running out of time here, I'll let it go here.
Because I think we have to approve the consent agenda and make sure we have quorum.
I'll let you, I'll wrap it up with this. We have a long, we have a long way to go with this, right? But it takes more than just laws. We have to take a personal responsibility. Thanks, Director, and I'm sorry that I went too long.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for that update. We need to approve the consent agenda, just before Carolyn leaves.
Yep, because Mayor, I think Councilman Stavros Anthony's not on the call, so.
Oh, he's not, so we have, just for the approval of this item.
Yes, so we'll, okay, so we'll do two things really quick. We need your approval on, Commissioner. One is to approve the consent agenda, consists of items five through 39, it can be taken in one motion.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay, and that motion carries.
And if I could take out of order, non-consent item number 41, we need to appoint three members to, and an alternate, the RTC Finance Committee.
Okay, who would like to serve on the Finance Committee?
I'd be interested.
Okay. Okay, George. All right, so we have a pretty strong group of people who are interested.
Okay, so, do we need to say their names? Okay, so, yes, so Mayor March will need to say who's on the committee. You can name all of them, then we'll just approve those members.
Whisher Johns, Whisher Brown, Whisher Galt. So we'll have more than three, but is that all right, or is that?
And one alternate.
So, would you like to be the alternate?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Let me make Mr. Galt the alternate, he's not here.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay?
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Yes, so just make a motion, we can.
I'll make a motion to appoint myself, Councilman Brown, Councilwoman Bridges to the committee, and Councilman Galt as the alternate.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay, and that motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Chairwoman. Okay, we can move, thank you, Mayor Goodman, we can prove, move to non-consent item number 40, and that is to receive information pertaining to the Nevada Department of Transportation's Sustainable Transportation Funding Study and Advisory Working Group from Director Swallow.
Thank you.
I told you I was going to talk again. I was thinking my report earlier was going to be short, and then ended up being long because I started talking about safety, but I'm excited to talk to you about this. This is something I've been talking to you and providing updates now since last July. Actually, I think even last legislative session, we were talking about as this was working its way through the session, and so now I wanted to give you a more extensive update. We are doing these updates across the state and with the local agencies, so that, specifically so that we can get feedback and input. As I have mentioned in the past, and I'll go into it a little bit more here, yes, N.DOT was tasked with forming this advisory working group, but it is an advisory working group that is broad, and the recommendations will come from the group, not from N.DOT, and so we want to make sure the group is out there and that they're getting information back from all of the parties that we should hear from, which is broadly Nevadans. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about our funding situation as it is today, the study and the advisory working group, some guiding revenue principles, so how we're going to compare what should be recommended versus not, and again, the "we" is the advisory working group, not N.DOT, and some next steps. So where we are today on our funding situation, I don't think any of this is news to any of us here. Population has grown. Our construction costs have gone up. Vehicle miles traveled, the miles that each and every one of us has, is driving, is going up. And I should note that the amount that we're driving, and you can see it right there, is outpacing the amount of our population growth. You would imagine that population grows, of course, VMT goes up. But in this case, what we're actually seeing because of lots of different reasons, the VMT is actually going up at a rate faster than our population is growing. And I should note that the, as a result of our rapidly growing state, which we're really lucky to be in the position that we are here in Nevada, and particularly in Southern Nevada, the increases in demand for more transportation investment just continues to grow. I mean, we can talk about all of the stuff on this dip that we've been talking about for the last couple of years that needs to be delivered, and how can we deliver it in a timeframe that works best for our community? I should note that one thing that's not on there is that, and one thing I think we often, as owners, neglect is the cost of the ongoing, that maintenance liability. Every time we add something, there's a, there's a very real cost of that maintenance liability, and it's estimated to be $20,000 to $25,000 per lane mile of asphalt is the annual maintenance liability. So you can quickly figure out what that would mean based on the amount of roads that you have in operation. That doesn't include all the other maintenance liability that you have for our really cool ITS systems, our bridges, our hydraulics and hydrologic systems, so. All right. Gas tax, it is the largest single source of funding in Nevada. The, what you see here, this is the state funding system, it does not include the federal funding that we get, but of the state funding, 42% of that is fuel taxes, 34% are other sorts of taxes on vehicles and drivers, and then, lastly, there's another 24% that's other taxes and fees. And this is a similar picture that you also see with the counties. It is, it is not the largest source of funding in the counties, but it is a significant source for county roadway funding too. And I should note that the state fuel tax has not been adjusted since the early 90s, and yes, Clark and Washoe did make some adjustments, but that adjustment was for indexing to inflation. It wasn't really, it wasn't an adjustment to account for the growth in assets that everybody is maintaining. It's an inflationary adjustment, and we all know that we've seen significant inflation since the early 90s. All right, transportation revenue just simply isn't keeping pace with the system costs and demands. On this slide, you can see the red, that's the top line for those who may be colorblind. The red is our fuel taxes to the state highway fund, and again, this is the state revenue, not federal. And the bottom of that is VMT. So you can quickly see, just in a snapshot from 2010, that the VMT is outpacing our revenue. And then, the revenue that we are collecting has, doesn't go as far. And so this shows the degradation of the cents that we collect, pennies that we collect of fuel tax per mile driven. And just like a quick factoid, in 1994, passenger car averaged 20.7 miles per gallon, and drivers paid roughly 3.2 cents in state and federal fuel taxes per mile driven in 1994. In 2018, that same pass, well, not that same passenger car, a new passenger car, averaged 24.4 miles per gallon, drivers were only paying 2.1 cents per mile travel. So that, that's a degradation of one-third, that's significant. All right, I'm racing through this, sorry, I know there will likely be questions. So let's talk about what's going on. In 2019, there was a Senate Concurrent Resolution, SCR3, which directed the government to take a look, the inner working group, to look at how electric vehicles and high-mileage-per-gallon vehicles, MPG vehicles, are affecting motor fuel tax revenues now and into the future, and what to do about them. And that evolved, that study initiative evolved into AB413, which directs, as I mentioned earlier, N.DOT to convene an advisory working group to study the needs of the state and recommend sustainable funding options. This statement on the screen is a mission that was developed by the advisory working group in September. It's the Transportation Funding Mission Statement, it is based on AB413. The words in blue come directly from AB413, and you can see the focus on the state highway fund, that we must look at at least two different funding approaches, and those were Utah's road usage charge program that is in effect and currently under operation for a portion of their vehicles, and the Natural Resources Defense Council proposed mileage-based tax. So there were two that we had to look at at a minimum. We also needed to be thinking about multimodal transportation funding for all users. We talk about that a lot. There were even questions just now about pedestrians and how we make sure that that's safe. And looking at improving the social equity, user equity, of the funding system, both, there are challenges to both in the current funding models and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and then also thinking about the role that land use and smart growth strategies might, might be able to play in ensuring that the funding is sustainable and long-term. So who's, who is this working group? These 29 people that I've mentioned, well, MJ is one of them, I am one of them. We have the chairs of the Senate and Assembly Growth and Infrastructure Committees, Senator Harrison, Assemblywoman Monroe Moreno, but we also have the Las Vegas Chamber, we have Labor Representative, we have the Latin Chamber, I'm trying to think who else, the Nevada Resort Association. So it is a broad group, in fact, the chairman, the chairwoman is Virginia Valentine from the NRA. So we have broad representation, League of Cities and NACO are both represented, to ensure that we're getting that voice from the cities and the counties, but also acknowledging that a voice at a table is not the same as coming out and chatting, so that's what we're doing. But the goal is, we have environmental groups, we have clean energy, NB Energy is part of this group, really, how do we, how do we crack this nut to ensure that funding for the transportation system will be sufficient and long-term, long into the future, as our vehicles continue to evolve? This is just roughly the meeting schedule and the objectives of each meeting. Each meeting, since the beginning, has had a very specific objective. You can see, we, you know, we organized, we talked about the problem. What is the problem? Not just at N.DOT, but what is the problem? Talking, we talked to the MPOs, and they helped present us their challenges, both with roadway funding as well as with transit funding. Started, we, in September, we looked at what those principles are going to be, and I'll talk about those here in a second. How do you compare revenue alternatives? It's a big scope, how do you compare them? So we talked about how we would do that. And then just in January, we really looked at dozens of alternatives, really put everything on the table. We were told to look at a minimum of two, but we know from across the, across the nation that many more have been considered, many more are currently in play and available in other states. We have a very limited funding in so many ways, but in transportation, that holds true too. We have a very limited funding pool, so we're looking at many options. So what are these revenue principles? These revenue principles, again, should help us measure and compare against each other. And here they are. Financial sustainability. Does it meet the financial, how long, how long is it going to be able to be effective? Right now, we know the fuel tax is being eroded every time fuel efficiency goes up, so that's not a long-term sustainability. Other sources are not currently that viable, so that's where we look at sufficiency. Does it generate the revenue that we need today? Does it generate the revenue that we need tomorrow? User equity, really looking at, you know, who's using the network. Right now, if you drive an electric vehicle, you're not really paying a whole lot to use the network. So how do we create a little more equity in that space? Social equity, how do we make sure that the people who are paying for the system, that everybody's paying the same, and it's not based on how fuel-efficient your vehicle is because of, because you can't afford the newest and the best? You have an older vehicle, we already talked about that, and how much more in gas that they're paying, simply because it's older. So how do we create more social equity in the system? Flexibility. Right now, you hear us, you've heard us have those conversations, you know, MJ has money for capital, but she doesn't have money for operations and maintenance. So how can we create some flexibility in there? Is it appropriate in this group to talk about urban transit, or is that a different way? We're having those active conversations. You've heard me talk about, a lot about urban transportation funding is critical, and we need to figure out a way at the state to help support that, in the way that it most makes sense. Greenhouse gas emissions, we have statewide goals, and many of our local agencies have local goals. How does this policy, or how does this help support that, or detract from that? And then, these actually, this last one, this last one has been broken out into two. How transparent is it? I mean, everybody sort of knows that they pay a gas tax. That's somewhat transparent, they sort of know, but they don't really know. It's super easy to explain, right? And it's super easy to administer. Some of these other models that we've been asked to look at may not be as easy to administer, even if they're more transparent, or there may be something that's like absolutely not transparent, nobody even knows that they're paying for it, and there's pros and cons to all of that. So that's, those are our metrics. We looked at, I told you, dozens, here they are. We've looked at a really long list. They're categorized into sort of the types of fees and taxes that they would be considered. In January, we, and that 29, those 29 people, really worked to try to narrow the list, and we had some really good conversation. There are 29 diverse opinions and perspectives, and so it was good, our consultant got a lot of really good notes in terms of where the hot buttons are and where the pros and cons are. We didn't reduce the list by much, just, and I told our consultant, they failed to manage my expectations there because I thought we were going to walk out with like 15 or 10, but they, I think, actually did anticipate we would have a really deep conversation. I should note, you've heard me say this, these meetings are full-day meetings, they're public meetings, we have opportunity for public comment, they are streamed so people can watch. It was really good conversation, it was good to hear the pros and cons from all of the different perspectives, really making sure that we're cognizant of this. And so, what are our next steps? So, in January, we looked at those funding options and alternatives. The group, and I think I've said this before, I think we're working towards a package of funding. It's not going to be, there is no magic bullet. There might be a magic bullet, it won't actually check all the boxes on the principles. You could easily, you could fill the gap today with one thing, you could fill the gap, but it's today with one thing. You could fill the gap. But it's not going to address social equity, it's not going to address user equity, it's not going to be sustainable. And so I think everybody has recognized that it's likely going to be a package of options, a package that looks at what is the need today, a package that looks at what is the need tomorrow, and how does this funding solution work in that space? Is there, are there different things we need to look at? The team, the consulting team is looking at bringing back to the A W G in March, a couple, a handful of different options, like how you might, how we might package this together. We're going to talk about those things. And I, I ventured to guess, at that meeting, there are going to be some things that are people like, you know what, we understand that you put in tire tax, but we really think it should be this. This would be a better thing. And so I, I think we're going to play some, some switcheroo's on that, and get to the package that we, the packages, and it may still be two or three, and there may be like a fourth option that comes to, everybody thinks we should consider. They're going to go back to work. I should note that March and April meetings are one hundred percent in person so far. They've been split between north and south, but March, the March meeting will be here in Vegas, everyone on the group will be in the same room. April meeting will be up north, everybody in the group will be in the same room. And that's because these, this is where it gets real. This is where we need to be able to like, look like we are right now, at each other's eyes, and be like, does this work? And, and are we on board? I should note, when I say, are we on board, that I know that some of our members are there in their capacity, but they're going to have to come back, and they're going to have to get, check in with their boards, right? And, and that's true for all, many of our members. And so, so after that meeting, you know, M J's going to be talking to all of us, or, or you, and talking about what we've talked about. And in April, we're going to come back. And in April, they're going to start looking at really, how do we right-size the package? What is the amount? How do we right-size? June is when we anticipate having the preliminary recommendations. The end of the year is when the report is due to the legislature. I should note that this is a committee that will provide a recommendation to the legislature. Ultimately, the decision, as we all know, is going to be up to the legislature. They, they, they directed us to have a diverse working group, so that they would make sure that, you know, that we were hearing from everybody, and all different types of people who use our system, rely on our system, and, and fund our system. And so, our goal is to, by the end of the year, have a full final report. But as you can see, by early summer, actually have those preliminary recommendations, so that if our legislators want to take something up, or if the committees want to take something up, so that we can, we're in the path and the line for legislative initiatives. So, that concludes my report. I should say, here's some, if you want more information, here's the website.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Obviously, this is one of the most critical things that our state is looking at. Having served in the legislature in 2013, I know that rating the Highway Trust Fund was definitely something that was a concern, because that's what happened in 2010, and again, and since then. But, but also during that session was when F R I was passed, and frankly, passed down to the county, to have to take the hard vote with regards to raising taxes on things that frankly, voters don't really like to have raised. So I, I guess my, my question is, is are there discussions of the political realities of anything that's considered?
Yes. The one thing that was actually removed, I'm trying to get back to that slide real quick. I think the one thing that was completely removed from consideration
Payroll.
Was the payroll tax. I mean, like, so, so we are talking, and, and I should note, like, I can say that one's easy, and like, but every single one of these, there's a conversation about the political reality. There's a conversation about, and part of the study is also looking at, and the team very much knows, that I need them to look and tell me, like, how much would this cost to administer? Because that's part of the political reality, right? The gas tax is, is very cheap to administer. Some of these other things might be very costly to administer. So we're looking at, at that, and we are looking at the, and, and I'm grateful, because we have, you know, we have the, the Senator and the Assemblywoman on our committee, so they can help us navigate those conversations. They're not speaking for their vote, they're not speaking for the legislature overall, but they are helping make sure that we're aware and we're thinking about the things.
And I would say, with regards to the representation, I'm, I'm glad that N A C O and League of Cities are on that board. I think that's, that's really helpful. But again, Clark and Washoe are different, because they've already chosen to, to raise taxes. So I, I think it's important for us on this board to have representation also, and have our, our different situation considered. Obviously, M J represents the R T C, but not specifically the local jurisdictions who are dealing with land use planning, which is a different consideration. With regards to right sizing, again, we've, we've talked about, what does that five-hundred million dollars look like? Because I, I think it's important to make sure that we understand exactly what projects N DOT is talking about, and if there are projects on that list that quite frankly, don't make sense in the first place.
Thank you. And I, I do have a question, or some thoughts. This meeting in March, will that be a public meeting? Is that open to where folks can come in and have public comments?
These, these are all public meetings.
Okay. And then, do you plan to actually go to each of the municipalities and, and have a conversation with the folks, so that, I mean, because I think that there will be issues that, that the commissioner raised about land use, and making sure that whatever we do, we don't kill economic development, right? Because it's really important to strike that right balance to where we, those folks who are bringing new business and industry are actually generating revenue that will come back in and feed the system. So we don't want to kill that effort.
Yeah. So, so two things. The first is, yeah, we're working on setting up meetings to have the conversations with the locals. And, and Kami, I, Kami is reaching out to your teams, if she hasn't already, to have those meetings. Whether or not it, it come, it ends up being a public meeting at one of your city council or county commission meetings, that we're, we're leaning on you to help us navigate those decisions, but we want to make sure that everybody gets the information in the manner that they feel is best for their communities. In terms of the land use piece, I should provide some clarity on that. We are going to provide some recommendations regarding how do you fund, fill the gap today, fund long-term, the highway fund. Like, that's going to be the recommendation. There may also be some sort of a recommendation around how we might be able to support our urban transit systems and operations. There may be some. Where M J and I are having conversations about how we best do that, so that we, so that it, it becomes as much as possible a yes and, versus an either or. And so we're working to try to figure out that we don't, we don't want to hurt any effort that is going on at the local level. We want to bring the story to the table that says, on the whole, our transportation system needs investment. And, and how do we do that best, thinking on a statewide basis? So, so that's that piece. The land use piece will be a separate set of recommendations. And, and I'm not entirely sure what those are going to look like yet, but that will be separate, and it will be one of those things like, and legislators, if you really want to ensure that this is sustainable, these are some things you may want to consider. But they may be things that, you know, it may be like ask, you know, working with the counties, working with the cities within your roles, right? Like, I think we're all thinking about this. We, we enjoy the best transportation system in the nation, because our system is young. Our system is young, because we have the fastest growing, you know, or one of the fastest growing states in the nation. And that's great. And not, and we're here, and we love, and we enjoy the prosperity our state has, right? So we don't want to chomp on economic development. That is not something that anybody wants to do. Whatever we do, we're doing in light of making sure that the system works to continue to drive our economic development.
And I know there was one other point that came up in our discussions, was really that we have to look at this holistically, in terms of not just transportation, but there's other infrastructure elements across the state, whether it's water, and other resources that need to be included in that conversation, as we're looking at a holistic structure. So, just, just our thoughts.
I can't look at water.
No, I know, but, but I'm.
But it is something, we talk about this. And when we are talking about, like, some of the land use stuff, we're talking about those challenges with ensuring that we have the systems in place to continue to meet the needs of our growing communities, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. So you'll be, next steps will be to go out and reach out to the very citizens.
We are going to continue to do, and we, I imagine that we'll also reach out again, June-ish, again, because at that point, we'll have the packages, and so we want to make sure. And you're going to hear from me every month, whether you like it or not, I'm going to be here telling you where we are at, and, and, and asking you to tune in and provide us your, your comments and your feedback.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next item forty-two is to receive information from the legal counsel. There are no issues today, so we can move on to your last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizen's participation period.
Thank you. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and state your name for the record. And I do have one card, and it's Dorothy Barnes.
I'm sorry. Dorothy Barnes, I want to participate in citizen participation. I lost my oldest brother during the pandemic. He passed, throat cancer, and I went home to be with my family during time of bereavement. I decided to relocate, because everything was quarantined here and down in Shreveport, Louisiana. So I got back here, I've been here since October. There's a lot of good things going on with R T C, and I would like to just point out, I have commented some on the good things that's been done. But there's some things I've experienced since I've been back, the homeless being abused on the buses. Of course, you're a human being, if your body has not had enough rest, and you can only stay up so many hours. And you have been in the shelter system, and they're telling the people, lie on her, don't let her in, don't tell her what to do. And you're being stifled off of on one hand, which what they call stifling is, to me, is a way of robbing a person without a gun or a knife, where they stick your name in there and lie and steal money in a dignified way. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired of complaining to the police, the F B I, getting names of people that are feaming off me, selling drugs, doing drugs over me. They allowed on the military base, I said a military base, have become a threat to the civilian community, because of the people they're allowing out there to hurt the people in the community. It's sad. I'm sixty-four years old. God bless me to see June, I'll be sixty-five. It's been a struggle for me, just to survive these last days. I grew up as a kid, everybody was enjoying life. You didn't worry about trying to get money, trying to, you know, maybe people were. I, I didn't see it as a kid, just running over people and abusing them, stealing money, causing your neighbor to be homeless, and then abusing them, because they're too sleepy, they fall asleep on the bus. Of course, your body's going to do what it's going to do. You get a nice warm place, and you don't have many hours of sleep, of course, your body going to shut down. I don't care how you try to stay awake, you're going to fall asleep. And then, it's aggravating that people getting into it, want to fight, and all kinds of confusion behind it. And I want to go on Eastern to the headquarters of these new marksmen, security company people, because I had to do it with the other company. I had to go to their headquarters at Flamingo and Eastern, Universal, whatever it used to be. But I, I want to cut it short. It's abusive to be lied on and stole from, and caused to be homeless. Then, once you're homeless, and you go into these homeless places that help, like the rescue mission, you know, and Courtyard and stuff, Catholic charity, then you're abused further. The people are lying on you in these places. Then you get tired, and you know, you're like me, I'm just struggling with trying to get my name off this program. And I begged and pleaded with them, take my name off the program. That's the, that's one of the things to prevent this other problem. And they have not removed my name off this program. These people are selling drugs at my expense, they're, they're feaming off me, they're stealing money, they're using me to pay the drug man, the ones that go on Nellis. I've given the police a list of names. I've had to wear with this problem over forty-five years, back and forth from the F B I to police. These people in violation of my rights. And I don't know a lot of homeless people's situation, what's caused them to be homeless, but I, I'm a living example of, of a homeless person that's being stole from, divested for income, so other people can have an income. They're devouring me, they're tolling me off like ants tolling off sugar cookies, swarming me like bees on a honey nest. I explain that to the police, and state police in my hometown and here. They're, you know, they're just pathetic. Just lying, abuse somebody, and steal from them, and call them be homeless. Then, once they're homeless, to abuse them more, your eyes was closed, throw you off the bus, you go inside the terminal, we're shutting the whole terminal down, they abuse the homeless. It's just abuse, abuse, abuse. Please, thank you all. We got something.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? We have no more cards. Okay, if we have no more cards, then, oh, okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Raymond Fletcher, for the record. Councilman Barone, I heard your words, that you were speaking, you know, the impact of having lives lost. For years now, I've been coming here to the R T C, talking about, while I'm sitting there waiting on the bus, the number of people on their phones, while they're driving their vehicles, looking on their tablets, while they're on the I fifteen, the number of people that fly around corners. Something needs to be done. You're absolutely right. And before another life gets taken. We hear the number of lives every week, every month, rather, that are impacted by the drivers, by the recklessness in our community. What happens is, we need to get some kind of committee together with the electeds, the stakeholders, the R T C, and members of this community, to come to some resolution on what does the impact need to be. And you're absolutely right, Councilman, there are no punishments for the people that are driving, and they're on their phone, or they're on their tablet, as I said, or any host of, any other issues that we face throughout our community. Too many lives are lost, too many lives are impacted. Fully-abled-bodied people become disabled now, through no fault of their own. You know, as I said, for years, I've been telling you, sit at Fashion Show Mall and count the number of people that drive by on their phones. You know, they're for red lights for a reason. People don't stop. They fly around those corners. And why don't you think I like taking Hercules out when I roll up to the corner store? It's not because of him, it's because other people won't wait. Seventeen times, I've been hit in my wheelchair in a crosswalk, when I've had the cross symbol. And I wait. I don't go as soon as it changes. So whatever your resolution is, Councilman, I concur with you, and I would happily extend an arm, a hand, and I would be happy to sit on any kind of combined committee, so we can come to a resolution. So those that are being improper with our laws, those that, excuse me, don't give a damn about anyone but themselves, they can be held accountable. Let's make the punishments stiffer. Take away their license. Maybe that'll, that'll teach them. Cost their insurance to be ten-thousand dollars. We have to do something. It's your children, it's your grandchildren, it's me, it's my peers. We need to do something to say to the people in our community. And again, I will be happy to serve on whatever type of committee that you, you want to put together, or whatever you want to put together. Have members of the R T C, have members of the county commission, have representatives from each municipality. You know, have several citizens involved. But we have to take a step forward. We can't wait another day for another life to be lost. We have to do this, we have to do this starting right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Additionally, with the rise of COVID-nineteen cases in Clark County, the R T C will temporarily be accepting public comment via email to be read aloud by staff into the record. Are there any public comments to be read by staff?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We have two. This is Mayor Dubois for the record. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Versnik. I have been testifying to this commission for almost four years, asking to expand the service area. Six months ago, the service area was expanded to my home, and I was finally in the service area after testifying every month for over three years. My son has worked at the Nellis Air Force Base Commissary for over eighteen years. For the last six months, Paratransit picks him up and brings him home. This has greatly improved his independence, and he is much happier. This has been a positive outcome for my son in light of the pandemic and all the negativity. One positive thing has happened for him. As I have previously stated, transportation is a critical piece for people to live an independent life. For people with disabilities, public transportation is often the only vehicle that can connect them to employment, education, health care, their social life, and relationships. Without transportation, people with disabilities live their lives in isolation, and don't have the opportunity to participate and be part of the community. We still have a lot of work to do. Many people still don't have access to transportation. I'm aware of the driver shortage that R T C is currently experiencing. Unfortunately, there is employee shortages across the board in every business. However, the need for transportation does not go away. I believe since I believe since the onset of the pandemic, the need has only increased. I've been asking this commission to develop a plan that would expand the service area to give more people access to transportation. In my opinion, this is way overdue, and I know we can do better. The city continues to grow, the housing market has tripled in price, and new housing developments continue to be built. It's ironic how we can accommodate our tourists to transport them to football games and hockey events, but we can't give transportation to people who really need it. Meeting the transportation needs of this community needs to be a number-one priority. I am once again asking this commission to develop a plan that can be implemented before the end of the year. In closing, it is important to continue public comment via email to be read aloud into the record. I am requesting that this continues. As I have previously stated, the virtual world is here to stay. I'm not sure if we will ever be back to normal again. I believe this is our new normal. Personally, I'm not sure when I will feel comfortable attending public meetings again. I believe everyone should have a way to make their voice and opinions be heard. Please consider continuing public comment via email as a permanent option. Then, from Ms. Kincaid. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Robin Kincaid, and I have been testifying at the RTC meetings for the past three years. My daughter Kayla is a frequent Paratransit user. Once again, the Las Vegas community is growing, and we need RTC to accommodate the growth within the community. I am asking that RTC develop a process to look at the growth and meet the needs in the areas in the over-age 55 communities, and communities that have existed for decades and still do not have service. Please make this a priority, priority to identify a process to expand the service area and publish the steps to the community that are necessary to accomplish this expansion. My daughter is still waiting for Paratransit to provide transportation to our place of worship in the Summerlin area. I would also like to see the RTC staff provide the commission information on the number of complaints received and the RTC response to the complaint. Each RTC meeting should have a review of this complaint matrix, the response remedy back to the writer, and the time needed to respond to the complaint. This data can be useful to improve services for Paratransit writers. Please put this on the agenda and be responsive to complaints. We are still struggling to use the RTC Paratransit system due to so many late buses. Please address this issue and create a plan to improve the on-time, so that persons with disabilities are not waiting 30 to 45 minutes past the 30-minute window. Thank you for your assistance in working towards solutions to make Paratransit a system that works for persons with disabilities. That concludes those comments.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing no one, this meeting is adjourned.